This is the City Council Finance Subcommittee for November 12th, 2015. Minutes for the prior meeting, Council Risk, you said you'll have yours at the...
Yeah, there's very few minutes, I just didn't get them.
And Counselor Pozinski entertained a motion on the minutes for the 12th. And I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Two to zero on that. I know Dan had to abstain because he wasn't there. Mayor's communication, none mayor, right?
I'm gonna forego that.
Public speak. Anyone here to, from the public that... Okay. Uh... If I could, maybe we could do just the one supplemental appropriation for, because Captain has been here, the police captain has been here for a whole hour with public safety, so I'd like to get his out of the way and then we'll go to old business and then back to the chief for his two fire cars. So Captain Alberti, if you would like to...
Which one are we doing?
We're gonna do the police vehicles. Forty-two thousand six ninety-two from Mark Police Vehicle to replace the Crown Vic.
That's a newer one.
Right. Captain, I guess you, I know you, Chief McMahon sent a letter basically saying that you're replacing one of the last four. How many more of the Ford Crown Vics do we have?
After this, we'll have two left in the line.
Two left, so that'll be...
How is that?
And I know there's a problem getting some of these now, is it gonna be a...
Do you mind if I keep this? Yeah, yes, sir.
But here, you can at least have your meeting.
The forty-two thousand six hundred ninety-two dollar number?
Yep.
That is based off a quote, a March quote. There hasn't been any new quotes that we can draw from. The issue is that Ford, the plant, is so backed up, we can't get, I mean, we can't get these cars to MHQ, which is our reseller, you know, they mark up our cars and equip them. MHQ can't get a Ford out of the plant, they're so backed up. We have one now that we've been waiting for since, I wanna say really summer.
It was, it was like the May-June time.
So we can't, we can only, we can only push so fast, it's so fast and so hard to get, to get these cars out of the plant, and they're not really listening to us either.
Probably not the biggest.
Yeah, no, no, they got bigger problems than us. So Car nine, the one that we're replacing, the odometer has been stuck for a very long time, motor repair hasn't had any luck trying to fix it. At eighty-eight thousand miles, and it's a 2009. The reality is, I have a 2011, an equivalent to that car with 108,000 miles. So this car, if the odometer was working, it's gonna probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 120,000 miles, somewhere in that neighborhood. The oldest car on the fleet has to be Stan's, and rather than trading in this car, I talked to the chief this afternoon, rather than trading it in, we would probably recommend giving it to another department to use. And I know, when I was talking to the finance director, I know that there was some conversation about getting an old Crown Vic from what?
We've been recycling all our vehicles because we have a group, we have a lot of departments that need them, inspectors and...
Right, so rather than trading it in, we're gonna turn it back over to the city. And the only thing I can stress again is, we're putting in for the forty-two thousand six ninety-two, whatever is above and beyond that, when we get a newer quote, we'll deal with it at the time, but I'm sure that's probably gonna come by way of offsetting the drug forfeiture. I'm guessing we've done that in the past, I'm just not sure exactly what the, what the chief has in mind there, but I'm assuming that's what it is.
And I know we, we were doing two and one at one point, but we've got a few cars through that drug thing, so I mean, are we...
Yeah.
I mean, you're moving, you're happy the way we're progressing.
The one that they're waiting for on Dan is the one where they paid for most of it, you know, it was a split, some of the, some of the city, it was actually funds that they had in their department and also drug forfeiture, which they were able to get, be able to utilize that, a portion of it.
And the chief vitalized...
That's the vehicle they're waiting for.
Right, that's the one, that's, they're actually, that vehicle's actually at MHQ now, so we finally got that.
Oh, so you are gonna get that one.
Yeah, after five months or so. And the chief vitalized in his, in his letter to the mayor, the vehicles that we did found out of...
Yes, out of the report. Any other councils having other questions?
We don't, so we're definitely gonna give it to another department, but you don't know who you're...
What I've been doing is, we have a long list of departments that need them, so what's been happening with the DPW is, one was in dire need, you know, these are people that need new vehicles, so obviously, when we get one we can recycle, that plugs a hole. So the first was, the DPW moves them down the line, but we had Parks and Rec that was in dire need of a truck last year.
Right.
So they're gonna get one of the DPW vehicles, and then what we're hoping is that as things move down the line again, because like with Patty, they use them, they'll move them from water to sewer to highway, you know, so we're hoping for, one, for our inspectors. We're in dire need of vehicles for our inspectors, our assessor's office, you know, the data collector, and also our building inspector, we have a local inspector and a building inspector. So I'm, we, we need...
You'll find a vehicle.
Yes, we, we're in desperate need there. These offices had vehicles before, you know, you can't blame people for not wanting to use their own vehicle, so we're really hoping to get something down the line for them.
And to that end, the Explorer, so the Car eleven is the, not Explorer, the Car eleven is the vehicle that's in process now. That's gonna replace our Expedition, which Joe said that he has a use for, so that, our Expedition will go to the DPW. And then the Cruiser, Car nine replacement.
In, in past years, actually it was a while ago, we had one of the old Cruisers that was used in the assessor's office for many years until one time they went to pull out of the parking lot and the steering went one way and the car went the other, and it ended up coming off the road at a point in time.
That was it?
So we, the, you know, the inspectors' offices, they have a need for them, and they did have them in the past, but once those were of no longer use, we've been waiting for things to trickle down. Unfortunately, some of our things either blow up, burn up, or are totaled, so they don't trickle down, you know, but whenever they, whenever they can, they, we need to. And especially for offices like the inspectors', because they're just in town, so, you know, it doesn't get the way around here, so you can really get some, some years out of them.
Lot more value than with the trade-in, in my opinion.
Oh, absolutely.
For the, for our city.
And a lot cheaper than paying either mileage and, you know, because we, obviously, we are required to pay, you know, fifty cents a mile, people are using their own vehicles.
If we get a thousand dollars, it's a lot.
And we're gonna get a lot more than a thousand dollars of value.
Oh, yes.
I know you talked about the odometer. Just rest the car in decent order, you think?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's in decent shape, it would be fine for a non-emergency.
Right, not, not for frontline use, for your purposes.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you, that's my good question.
And again, with the police, you know, I hate using that expression, but you know, thank God for drug money, because you can see what's been purchased.
Right, what has been purchased.
It's really has been a huge savings to our, you know, to our fleet.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Approve.
Okay. Second. We have a motion and second to approve the forty-two thousand six ninety-two from free cash for a police department for the purpose of a fully marked line cruiser. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. I'll set a public hearing, is it December 4th? Can somebody look at the first Wednesday in December? Or do we have a, I'll set it at the next meeting, we have a meeting next week for December.
Yeah, December, okay, it could be December 4th.
Okay, so December 2nd is the next meeting?
December 2nd, okay.
So that would mean the public hearing would be at the 16th?
No, no, I'll set the public hearing next week.
For the December 2nd.
Oh, that's right, we're still in November, sorry.
Right, for the December...
Yeah, I'm getting old fast enough.
So the public hearing will be for the December 2nd meeting, if you can be there, Captain, how do we get... Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Dave, that was our only yes of the night.
Yeah, we have a quota.
That's why he likes to go first.
Yeah, but see, you still have a vehicle that drives.
Is that my fault? Whose fault is that?
Yours.
Thank you.
If, if we could go to the old business, the first item, Chief, and it should be a fairly quick, is the supplemental appropriation for eighteen thousand for the protective clothing. I've already set public hearings on these four items for the next city council meeting, so this one will come up in the next council meeting, but we didn't actually take a vote on it. So if you just wanna give us a brief, I know this is the dating of the, you can't buy state regulation, I just...
Right, this is to replace the last, I think it's eight sets, no, eleven sets, of gear that are no longer able to be used to go to the fire academy. NFPA has a standard where any gear, any component of the gear that's more than 10 years old can't be used for live fire training. You can still use it to fight fires, but you can't use it for training, which hampers us. The problem we're in, in 2004, yeah, 2004, Chief broke out a federal grant and we bought everybody all the gear head to toe, which was great, but the bad part is, all thirty sets came to the end of their life at the same time. I've been piecing, piecemealing two, three sets a year out of budget, and their average, they're about nineteen hundred dollars a set off of state bid, so there's not a lot of room in the budget to replace them. And it's better that way because they're not, all gonna expire at the same time. The problem is, we just had an opportunity for a fire academy, like fire training class, and half the department couldn't get it now. So, and we need to move that forward and, and replace those, not only from a training point of view, but some of the guy's gear after 11 years is pretty beat up.
And you said this would be 11 sets?
I think it was 11 sets.
That gear is 11 years old.
Yes.
Is the 11 sets all of them, or are you staggering them all this time?
No, it's the, it is to replace everybody but mine. So everybody will have gear that they can go live fire training with, and I can do mine next year out of budget.
Is, are you gonna run into the same problem 11 years from now? I mean, it...
No, what we've been doing is, we've been hiring, we've been ordering new gear, and I've been replacing it for the last four years as much as I could out of budget, or what was left at the end of the year.
So this is beyond budget, this is an appropriation to accomplish what you can't do in budget.
Unless you wanna, come budget time, give me eighteen thousand more in my budget.
That's a no.
That's our job.
That was, that was quick.
Side question.
Sure, that's for them.
Not quite on the subject here, but I happened to be listening to the news this afternoon and reported a Connecticut incident where a firefighter's air pack was not tested prior to a live fire, and the firefighter died.
Doesn't surprise me.
Yeah, they were in, in the building, the air ran out prematurely, called for help, but didn't get help fast enough. How often do we check our...
Ours are done every year, which is a requirement.
A requirement.
Yeah, every year, they're, what, the manufacturer's rep comes in and does what they call a flow test, where they make sure the right amount of air is moving, all the alarms work. Actually, ours were just done two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
But it's an annual requirement that they get done.
Glad to hear that.
Excuse me, can I just, I'm looking for Conference Room B.
Downstairs.
Downstairs, one flight down, yep.
Go center stairway.
There's a center stairway right here on the right-hand side, just pass on the right-hand side.
Oh, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve this, we need to do it.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the eighteen thousand dollar supplemental appropriation to purchase protective clothing for the fire department. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I hate to keep bouncing around because it makes it hard for Counselor Risk, who's taking minutes over there, but...
It's all right.
If we could bounce back up to supplemental appropriations so we can get the fire chief out of here.
Yeah, we gotta get him.
He's been here a while.
This is a seventy-six thousand dollar request for two vehicles. You wanna purchase a Chevy Traverse SUV to replace the Ford Taurus, and a Chevy Traverse to replace the 2008 Expedition, which is recently taken off the road.
Yeah, it's a, the 2008 Taurus was my car that met its untimely demise a couple weeks ago, and it will replace the 1999 Ford Expedition that was given to us in 2007 by the town of Russell, and will also replace the 2004 Taurus station wagon, which will be repurposed to another department.
2007 Taurus?
2008 was the one that met its untimely demise.
That's yours.
Yeah, the 2000 Taurus is the wagon that'll be reassigned to another city department.
I don't think Wayne's gonna let that go.
So we're basically getting, replacing three vehicles with two.
What was the demise?
It was involved in an accident, it was totaled.
Was, not that...
Was the driver cited?
No, the driver didn't know what happened. Next thing I knew, I was looking at the roof, I couldn't figure out what happened.
It was a three car.
Four.
Four?
Because I actually hit the lady in front of me too.
Because the car hit you from behind?
No, the guy behind me got hit from behind, and then I hit the car in front of me.
Ah, multiple.
Will, will we get any insurance on this?
I'm just gonna ask the same question.
Yes.
Yes.
And what we'll do is, Val will set up a special account for insurance recovery for that, and if it's timely enough, we'll be able to use that funds directly for the purchase of this, we'll put it on a purchase order, and if not, the funds will only be able to use for that anyway, if not, they will go back into the city and come out as, you know, in free cash next year.
Right, so we should get something back.
Oh, yes, we should, actually, we're gonna do...
They can only be used for vehicle replacement?
Yes.
In the fire department?
It'll be an insurance recovery specifically for that. The one thing, another thing that Val has done is, we used to have, you know, a lot of different accounts, miscellaneous accounts for that, she's cleaned them all up, so they do go back to the city every year, which is a good thing.
Do, do we have any idea what that insurance thing is, or that hasn't been...
It ha, it's close to, like, it's in the 7,000 area, yeah, so it's, it looks like it's gonna be pretty good, but it's not, I haven't received exactly the figure from the, from the insurance company yet, and I, and we haven't received anything else on the other end as to, like, they have instructions, we have to take a lot of the equipment out and, you know, things like that, so there's charges to take things out and charges and reimbursements for things that were lost. So as to when we'll get that check, but the minute we get it, it'll be deposited into insurance recovery account specifically for that.
And while we're talking about insurance, I'm sure you're probably well aware of this, but for those who may not be listening to us, oftentimes in the insurance companies, they'll adjust based on if you put in a new battery...
That's right.
...or a new part, or new tires, or some new components of the vehicle, and they'll give you some credit on that.
Right.
I don't know, a Taurus, I'm not sure how much in general you're gonna get with the parts, yeah.
That's exactly true, JP, that's, that answers the question that I was just talking to Dan, that's why it hasn't been determined, we're negotiating on different things, like, you know, lights and different things that, computers, different things that we need, and, and the values that we believe they are, so that's why the exact amount hasn't been determined yet, for that exact reason.
Chief, one other, how big are these Travers? I'm not...
They're about the size, I brought a picture, they're, they're pretty comparable in size to the Ford Explorers. Actually, when you look at wheelbase and everything, they're, they're within inches of each other.
Okay, all-wheel drive.
That is a nice looking vehicle.
That's off the GM website, of course it's kinda...
It looks good. Can't wait, can't wait to see what he stamped on it.
The other one will be for the fire inspector, because we're getting rid of the Ford Explorer that has a hole in the frame and the motor burns a lot of oil, and the Taurus wagon.
The Ford Explorer, that's the one that kinda caught fire last time you started that up, that's why we took it off the, right?
We're doing well here.
We won't be recycling, that one's not going to be inspectors.
We're gonna have to have the top ten cars, the, the other one with the stop signs holding up the floorboard.
Is that the car they're getting to?
Yes.
Yeah, they only offer one shade of red.
One shade of red.
Just for the other counselors that they ask at the, excuse me, can I help you?
Hi, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Hi.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
What, I just was gonna, the four-wheel drive, the all-wheel drive, the other was obviously front-wheel drive, at least the Taurus is.
The wagon, wagon was front-wheel drive, my car was all-wheel drive.
All-wheel drive, so I mean, you want the all-wheel drives much more, I would assume.
Yeah, because right now, we're going into the winter with just one all-wheel drive vehicle.
Okay, and these'll hold a little bit more equipment too, if you're, I assume you're, I'm just looking for more functional for them.
Biggest problems, like, the day of the microburst, trying to, wearing the dual hats of fire chief and emergency management director, trying to run that incident out of a laptop in the front seat of my car, it just doesn't work. Middle of the winter, having all my gear in the trunk of my car when I get to a fire scene, putting on cold gear that's been sitting in the trunk all, all winter, all night, is a little bit rough, doesn't get any easier the older you get. Trying to work out of a front seat of a trunk of a car at an incident that size, you know, working, coordinating resources, it just doesn't, doesn't work. By having the extra space, and these vehicles come without the third row seating to give more room to store equipment. Stuff that I have now currently, though, now that I'm using the pickup, it's just thrown haphazard, but trying to grab stuff out of the truck, map stuff, or trunk maps, things of that nature, was just a nightmare.
Okay, and I would assume it's not that much, I, I know you've got it approximately the same as the Explorer, but I wouldn't think it's that much worse probably today than any of the other vehicles.
Price rise, they're, they're within like the $200 of each other on the Plymouth County bid, the Traverses are not on the state bid, so that's why we gotta go with Plymouth County bid. And this one is at a...
Eight to 10 week delivery instead of eight to 10 months? Right, it's, it's either the police team, I assume you're, would be at the same time. Anything else, gentlemen, or JP?
Happy to make a motion to approve. JP's ready?
No, I'm good.
Motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve two vehicles for the fire department and for the sum of seventy-six thousand dollars from free cash. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Again, this will, I'll set a public hearing next week, and it'll be for December 2nd. And the, your other one has already been set, the fire equipment has already set for next Wednesday, so we're public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
You too.
Okay, I guess now we can move back to old business, so we can get Patty out of here next. We have two items from Public Works, I think that's it. The 50,000, we'll do first the 50,000 for True Heart Drive, Adam Street Pump Station improvements. Patty, if you wanna just kinda give us a, a little of a rundown what it involves, or...
Yeah, Adam Street, they wanna replace both motors and the motor control panel. The electrical panel is still inside the building, it's actually a building on Adam Street, that's the only one that's still inside, so in order, once they start changing things out, it has to come up to code. And to code means they would have to make it explosion proof for the building, so they wanna put it to the outside, all their other panels are on the outside, and the Tampa proof stainless steel, so they're gonna put it on the outside.
So Adam Street is the only now self-contained, if, I don't know, inside, so you're just moving the panel outside?
Panel outside, two new pumps and a control.
Now, are these things that are broken down, or just sort of preventative maintenance, things that are just worn?
They want, the pumps will be a lot more efficient, and they're getting old, so before they break, and then you have a catastrophe, they're trying to keep them off.
You said the panel by code must be put outside, I just catching a problem.
It's not even, to make it, once they, what's the word I'm looking for? Once you start, you know, once they start to mess with it, once you do any changes, any upgrades, they would have to bring it up to code, and it's not up to code now, so the cheapest way is to bring it outside and get it out of the building, so all the other stations, the code, the panels are outside.
Just I have a question, is there anything else inside that might have to come outside in the future, do we, or is this the la, this is the last item?
For pumps?
You certainly wouldn't wanna bring up the whole building, I imagine, I imagine you looked into that, the cost of doing that.
And True Heart Drive, they wanna replace the motor control panel and two pumps, the same thing, higher efficiency pumps, update the pumps. And the motor control panel is just what switches to turn the power on and off.
Do they have to be put outside too?
No, they're where they're supposed to be. I don't think that's actually a building, I think that's either the manhole one, honestly, I haven't been up to this, but that's not a building, I think it's a manhole in the ground, and the panel's a whole town.
Good, anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, a motion and second to approve the 50,000 dollars from retained earnings to capital projects for upgrades to the True Heart Drive and to the Adam Street Pump Station. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Patty, that one's already set for next Wednesday's, for public hearing. If either you or Joe can do that, we'd be appreciative.
We're doing water meters.
Uh, yes, we're doing the 50,000 now for water meters. I know this has been an ongoing expense we've had for several years now, and I guess we take one step forward and a half a step back or something, or...
It'll never go away.
It'll never go away, don't it?
It'll never go away. I went back, and since 2001 capital appropriations, we've gotten 750,000 dollars, and out of budget, we've spent probably about 250,000 on water meters.
Did you happen to know how many meters that bought, offhand?
Um, each year, it's different, because a lot of times, it's just parts, sometimes we go in, now with putting the radios on, I think we're at 23% that don't have radios now, so sometimes we can go in and just put a radio on, sometimes the meter's not compatible, so then we have to do the meter, and, so the meter's about 110, and the radio's about 125, and that's only if it's a small meter. This year, we had a couple of larger meters, larger meters for a lot more money.
Are we still buying new ones, or are we to the point where we're just replacing old ones?
We'll always be on that cycle, there'll always be the old ones, and it's just gonna continue, I mean, there's still new construction, there's still new things.
But as far as new, are we caught up anyway?
Are there radio now?
No, 23% aren't radio.
So we have 23% that's still...
Aren't, 23%.
They're not radio, so they still have to go up to the house and do an annual, so right now, we're on a kick to try to get, before winter comes, we're on a section and just trying to get the radios, so when the guys go in, they don't know if they can just put the radio on, or if they then have to change out the meter. So we just sent out a lot of letters.
So these will be trying to replace all those non-radio ones?
We don't know, because it all, we'll get a stop meter, you know, the guys will go, read, we'll get a zero read, so...
Then you have to replace that one first.
Because that's a known read.
Oh, and, and, you know where we're going with this? Between Counselor Pagan and myself, oh, they, they fix those meters really, really fast.
They came out and fixed mine, it's spinning like a top.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
You oughta turn off your water.
It's spinning like a top now.
When mine died, and I call, boy, they were there really fast to fix that meter.
You wouldn't want anybody thinking you were getting your water free.
Oh, graciousness.
Patty, there are charges for installation of a meter, as I recall, in terms of, if you buy, build a new house, and a meter goes in, there's no charge?
No charge.
You have to make...
There's a water connection fee.
You're paying 1,250 dollars to hook to the stub in the street.
Okay, that's for the stub in the street, not for the meter cost.
No, and then the only time you would pay for a meter is if you do not protect it and it freezes, then you would get charged for the meter, as a frozen meter, or...
How much, how much should we charge for a frozen meter?
No heat?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty bucks. That happens on occasion.
In the winter a lot, people just, yeah, people go away, they decide not to heat their house.
They don't heat their basement?
We go by, water's crushing out the back windows.
And they have a water bill?
Before or after the meter?
Probably the $150 isn't gonna hurt when they get the water.
It's too bad.
But they would have to pay for it.
Yeah. We've had a lot of them. People... A lot of people walking away from foreclosures. They just walk away. We go by, the meter reader can't look in the windows because they're all steamed up.
Yep.
Saves them a lot of money not shutting them off when they're in there.
Any other questions on the water meters?
Keep those meters going.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve $50,000 for replacement of... Continuing replacement of water meters and making them radio design. Any further discussion?
Aye.
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 Three, zero.
That's it?
Thank you.
We do the free cash.
Patty, that one's also set for next Wednesday, both for public hearing.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
Okay, thank you, Patty. Okay, that takes care... No, we have one more on...
We wanted to do 150K.
150 from free cash to capital stabilization.
Figured we'd get a big fight on this one.
We don't want you saving money. We want you to spend it. But you know something that Barb said? I can't imagine. She said this year's free cash was one of the highest in recent years.
No.
No. It's under a million dollars.
It was last year.
Last year, because...
You got it, you know. Oh, I know. I didn't believe her. I said, "Last year, we had all that new growth."
She probably meant last year. No, there was not. Last year was the... And you remember, because last year was high, because of 15 cottage and... Yep, yep, yep. Remember all that?
We got all this tax money.
Exactly. That was our biggest tax title. You remember all that?
And we put it in the bank.
That's where... And we created a capital stabilization fund with it, which we're gonna deposit into.
Add to, which is good.
Do we have... I probably asked this the last time we were doing this. How much is in capital stabilization?
I have on my sheets ready. Here, hold on. I'll give you a... I'll go give you a printout of everything. I have it right on my screen.
Hold on, no.
Right on my screen.
I didn't need to do that.
No, I actually usually have it right with me.
Seven or eight...
Well, there's capital stabilization and regular stabilization, which is what they are now.
Yeah, but you might wanna know what's in everything.
This is my one that's on.
I'll give you a whole sheet. I'll give a printout of it.
It was like 500, I mean, 550 you put in there last year, about 40.
I'll just give them the amounts. Instead of guessing at it, it's right on my screen.
But do you have the ability? I don't know how this is...
You're probably gonna wanna know what you have left in free cash.
Right. That way, I can use it next week.
What's the regulation? If you suddenly need to use this for something that's not capital, although I don't know what it would be, can you move this money, or are you allowed... Can the council move the money?
Yes.
In other words, don't even think about it, but yes, you can.
Capital will be... Capital will be 625 with this.
With this, okay.
JP, did someone say this is required by law to have a capital stabilization account?
No.
No, it's just that...
We look at them.
Staples... You can have multiple stabilization accounts.
Free cash will be 634-710.
What is it?
Free cash will be 634-710, and that's after everything I've given you. That includes everything you've received.
And what's regular stabilization? Do you know?
What's that? Uh, that's 1558.
You got that one? 1543?
15...
You got that one, Melissa?
I have 155...
1.543 million.
1543, and some change.
That's the last. That's the close of last year. We've made a little money.
That's pretty good.
That's one and a half million, right?
We have over $2 million in stabilization funds of different types.
And Enterprise?
Enterprise?
687-828.
Retained earnings?
Yes.
Six... What did it say? 627?
687.
687-828. Another 600.
Pretty good. Well, I move that we spend the money instead of saving.
Did I say we give it all to the school?
And like I said, that's with everything you have.
That's currently on.
It doesn't matter whether you've approved it or not.
What's on the agenda is all in there.
It's all in there.
So, the idea behind this...
So, everything goes...
You'll still have these four.
That's what the amounts are.
If we have an emergency fire truck, we need to replace it because we've lost it completely, and you don't have free cash anymore, you'd use it if there's an emergency. That's what we use these kind of things for.
Okay.
I have no problem. I'll move that we do it.
I'm second.
And this one?
I'm thirty, too.
I have a motion and a second for a $150,000 transfer from free cash to the capital stabilization fund. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That takes care of all our old business, and as you know, Mayor, that's already set for public hearing. So, now we just have the pay plan on supplemental appropriation. Explain this, Mayor. I know it's like... Or maybe Jane, I don't know who wants to explain this, but this is like six months? Do I remember this right?
Okay.
I know this one's off the...
Yeah, what this is...
I don't wanna say off the cycle, but I know we always get it like that.
I'm actually sorry to say that this is... This is six months behind. This would take effect January instead of what technically should have taken effect last July. So, this should have been... I mean, wishfully would have been great if this increase could have been in the 16 budget. That's when it was due. And... But it couldn't happen in the 16 budget, so we waited for free cash, so it's basically six months behind.
Okay.
So, it would take effect January 1st.
Yes, and so, this is a permanent raise because you're not gonna take it away. You give them 1.5%, it stays there.
That's correct.
Maybe next year, if you can, you'll do another call up.
Right. But, you know, like, we've been talking about trying to keep things in accordance with the labor contracts, so unfortunately for the pay plan, they've missed six months of their increase.
They missed six.
So, their last increase was July of 2014. So, it would have been great if we could have included this into July of this year, which would have been fiscal '16, but it... As you've seen with that budget, there were a lot of... There were actually a lot of cuts and things like that, so it couldn't happen.
Why not retroactive to 32? You didn't wanna do that much.
Well, it would double the amount, but, I mean...
I'm just curious why you didn't think that... You wanna save the free cash.
I mean, I do think that, you know, there were people that got kinda caught. We've lost a few.
Possibly.
Yeah, not...
It was...
I don't necessarily think that should be paid for by the pay plan people, but, I mean, I do think it's probably... I mean, everyone suffered. I know the fire we've settled with finally. I mean, I think everyone...
Obviously.
Everyone seems to be trying to work in the city.
I understand. Makes sense.
Right.
But certainly, I don't have a problem with this.
Well, I think it's fair, absolutely fair. I like the notion that pay plan employees feel that they're going to get... If labor contracts are 1.5 or something similar, the pay plan employees have an advocate that's gonna... In the mayor, that is gonna try and match that. And that's important, because it's important to me that they feel as appreciated as we do our labor units. That's my soapbox statement.
No, just listen to Dan's soapbox.
Motion to approve. JP?
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? I just have one quick comment I forgot to say. There are... Pay plan people did get, if they haven't hit their maximum, did get their steps, though, right?
What we have done since my administration is steps will be given when they're due, which is anniversary.
So, I just wanted to make sure they didn't also lose their...
And, you know, and we're over... Well, as we get a few new people, but at one time, we were already over half of them are maxed, more than half now. But that will continue to happen until people are maxed. So, at one time, sadly enough, we went five years without steps, and that's just not appropriate.
Yes, Chief?
I think the motion has to be amended to include the ordinance that goes with it.
Okay.
So, in other words, this is... The pay plan is...
Is an ordinance.
Is an ordinance. This approves the financing for it. So, I think the motion should be to approve the financing and the ordinance to affect this pay plan increase. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have amended motion that this $16,000 will include both a motion for the appropriation of...
Financing and...
$16,000 to finance it and also the upgraded ordinance of setting it inside to the pay plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll set a public hearing for the second.
Do we have anything else? Is that supposed to go upstairs?
The only other thing we have, and I...
Animal shelter?
This would be fast. No, no, no. Is... And maybe Jane, I know is on the board. The...
Oh, that's why Jane's here.
Retirement Board has asked now to maybe provide stipends. And I only left this for general discussion because I wanted to get a little sense from the board of what we were looking for, who we wanted to come down. In other words, I think they're looking for stipends, Jane. You can... For the board members and possibly the...
There's three different categories. There's the board members...
Yeah.
The auditor and the treasurer.
Treasurer.
The auditor and the treasurer right now are receiving $1,500.
Okay.
The board members are receiving nothing.
Okay. And this would be up to, again, if we approve it, retirement board. I understand it, just so that we have it. And again, we'll have one more discussion on this. But we could move up... Or you, not us. If we approved this, it would be up to the board, say, for the treasurer or the auditor, to move them up to as much as 4,000? Is it 4,500 or 3,000?
The board members can go to 4,500. The treasurer and the auditor, I believe, were up to...
Would go automatically to 3,000, because is that... If is approved, right?
So, the way I understood it, they were looking to put all three categories at 3,000.
3,000.
How does this affect our budget? I know it's a tough question.
Well, it's part of the operating budget of retirement.
So, we would have to increase that a lot?
You don't do that budget. That budget is funded from the retirement board. I mean, it's such a small amount. I mean, I guess you could say...
Small amount of unfunded liability or increasing the...
Not really. It's operating expense. It's more like what you pay for their rent. It's that kind of cost, which is part of the overall operations of the system. So, they pay for their financial advisors through that, and like, they submit to every winter a budget. You know, this is what it costs to have our two employees, to have health insurance for our two employees, to rent the space that we rent, have the copier we have, buy fax machines, that kind of thing.
But I think Dan wants to know where the funds, you know... So, does that increase the funds, the appropriation that we give to the retirement board every year?
It's not part of... They had figured it into this year's budget.
They already figured it in.
With the understanding that it may not be used if it's not approved, but when they were doing the budget, they've been talking about this for a while. So, when you're on the budget planning, they put it in the budget.
Do you think, Jane, this is... This sounds like it's something we should do, but they don't get anything.
Well, I'm looking at some information that the team provided, and there are 71 boards that provide stipends, and there are 31 that do not.
71 in the state.
Correct.
So, 71 do. That was one of my questions, and 31 don't.
Right. 48 of them are at $3,000. One is at 3,600. Three are at 4,000, and 19 are at 4,500.
How many board members, Chief?
That's... Myself, Jim Dunham, Don Emerson, and the new member is Connie. I can never remember his last name.
So, four.
Four plus Val is the auditor.
Yeah.
Who sits on...
Oh, she also...
It's okay for you and Val to get a stipend, given that you're already city employees, because this is a separate independent... I just wanna make sure.
But then Melissa would make six.
Correct. I'm not a board member.
No, you're not a board member.
So, there... But the way it's written up in the regulations, there's the auditor section, the treasurer section, and the board member section.
Would the auditor get a stipend for being a board member and for being auditor?
We had talked about that, and it was supposed to be that all three categories were going to be at the 3,000.
So, she would...
But she wouldn't double dip. She would be one, correct? Okay.
She had requests. So, Wes did it, but it was...
All right, so that I'm clear?
Not all other boards would.
Correct. So, that I'm clear. I thought you said 3,000 was what they requested. So, that would mean that all six... There's five technically board members, and Melissa, all six would receive the 3,000, not 3,000, and then an additional 1,500.
Yeah, I'll have to discuss that, but if it's never...
That's where I wanna know.
Right here, this one.
Okay.
Now, the board is... Some of the board members put together stuff that they feel... We have to do a lot of training. There's a lot of continuing ed requirements for us to be on the board. They felt that we also have to provide the statements of financial interest, personal financial, and then the conferences and the board meetings.
So, there's a lot of time, a lot of training, a lot of education.
How many actual meetings, Jane, do you have?
Once a month.
Once a...
There's two conferences, one spring, one fall that everybody did.
Okay. As I said, when I put this on the agenda, I wanted to just kinda get some general information. I think, could we have the... I don't know who's the chair. Are you... Are you chair, or is Mr. Dunham's... Mr. Dunham's the chair?
Jim Dunham. He was going to be here, but he had a death in the family.
Oh.
And how about the...[1590.12]